Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. It is now 5:00 PM, November 6th, 2023. This is the beginning of the work session, business session, for the November 6th meeting of the Village of Port Jefferson Board of Trustees. Clerk Perillo, would you like to confirm the presence of a quorum?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Shepro?
Present.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Casse?
Present.
Thank you. Trustee Laux?
Present.
Thank you. Trustee Biondo?
Present.
Thank you. Trustee Juliano?
Present.
Thank you. I now say that we have a quorum, ma'am. Attorney Moran?
Present.
Thank you. Treasurer Gavka?
Present.
Thank you. With that, we enter into Resolution Number 01110623, Resolution to enter into executive session at 5:01 PM to discuss potential litigation and matters of employment related to particular persons. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Move a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Coming out of executive session?
Resolution Number 02110623, Resolution to close the executive session and reopen the Port Jefferson Board of Trustees meeting at 6:07 PM. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Clerk Perillo confirmed the presence of a quorum earlier this evening, and right now, we'd like to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's good to see everybody here tonight. Almost, a lot of chairs are full. That's awesome. Clerk Perillo, would you like to start with the announcement?
Yes, thank you. The next Board of Trustees meeting is scheduled for November 20th, 2023, beginning at 6 o'clock PM. It includes a public hearing regarding a proposed local law amending Chapter 41 Ethics Code of the Village of Port Jefferson Code.
So, public hearing?
Yes.
That's exciting. That's two weeks from today?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Hope to see everybody there. And when will we post that draft?
On the 13th.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We'd like to ask Suffolk County Police and our code enforcement team to come on up for reports. Officer Muller, good to see you.
All right, good evening, everybody. Right off the bat, I'd like to start with some traffic information. I know there's been some requests for some enforcement here in the village. So, year-to-date, we have written approximately 482 summonses that have come to this court. To this point this month, so far, we are 12. But most importantly, on Brook Road, which has become a problem, and I think there was some requests here from the village board to, for us to increase activity. So, from October 18th to November 3rd, we issued 10 summonses and gave 12 warnings to drivers that were pulled over in the three-week span. So, from October 18th to November 3rd. You're welcome. In regards to criminal incidents, there was a decline in incidents, which is great. Harassments went down. Does somebody put in their hands on somebody else that shouldn't? Larcenies went down, people taking property. And then, overall, motor vehicle accidents went down as well. Last year, we had about 24; this year, 21. Zero fatalities, which is always good. But overall, everything seems very good. Any questions for me? Yes, ma'am?
Barbara Sabatino, 2 Westview Avenue. I just have a question about, it doesn't happen in the village, but it's out of the village, but it's in your purview. When you come to a traffic light, there are people panhandling and usually have a little sign that says, "Anything will help." And lately, at Jane Boulevard and 347, there are women, or a woman, but I don't know if it's the same woman, selling roses with a little sign that said, "Hard times need help." And I can only think that roses aren't cheap. So, I would like to know if, in your opinion, is this a scam? Is it, I've seen in the past, people come out in droves and they're all over the place as a money-making opportunity, and I just wanted to get your opinion.
So, one of the things that we do out of the six precincts is we reach out to the two men that are usually on 347 at Old Town Road and then further down the road, and we offer assistance. They know the law, so as long as they remain within our sight in that medium, they know we really can't touch them. Once they get on the highway, then we can say, hey, you know, it becomes an issue, a safety concern, and we can address that with them. Both of them have, you know, refused any assistance that we offer, whether it's housing. One of them has a drug issue that, you know, we had to clean up the wood area because of the mess that he had made. But in regards to the roses, I haven't seen them. I don't want to speculate on whether there's a scam or not, or where they're getting the roses to sell. I agree with you, they're expensive. But we'll definitely look into it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Officer Muller, for that. Chief Owen, Chief Constable, please forgive me for not being in uniform. I just came from a funeral.
Madam Mayor, Board of Trustees.
Thank you. To start off our meeting this evening, we have positive note on a traffic survey that we did on California Avenue from October 3rd to October 18th. Total vehicles counted passing the location, 844. Average speed of each vehicle is 22 miles an hour. The maximum speed recorded was 49 miles an hour. The total count under the speed limit was 797, which is 94 percent. Total count over the speed limit was 47 cars, which is 6 percent. So, majority of the people are in compliance, and that's good to know. Hopefully, hopefully, it keeps up in that area as well as throughout the village. Past events that we've had in the village, the homecoming parade, the fun run, the harvest fest, the costume dog parade, and the children's Halloween party, as well as Halloween. All went off with no major incidents to report and no issues. Upcoming events we have is the outdoor skating rink is going to open at Village Center, I believe, November 24th. They're putting it together already. The Santa Parade is November 26th, which we will be on hand to help with traffic control. And Dickens Fest, they've been planning it for that all year. December 2nd and 3rd also will be on hand that weekend. As far as our complaint report recap goes for the month of October, we've had, we had 44 complaint reports written. The top four for that, believe it or not, assisting other agencies, be it Suffolk County PD, DPW, or what have you, aided cases, traffic conditions, and village disturbances. As far as summonses go for the month of October, code wrote, 323 summonses. The majority written were for uninspected vehicles, overtime meter parking, missing license plates, and parking without a permit in our resident lots. Once again, we are offering discretion and giving out warnings on top of those summonses. Last meeting, a gentleman asked about a, to do a survey as far as our ALPR license plate reader on car PJ3 through the resident lot on Arden. We had 113 passes through the Arden lot with that vehicle. And as you know, PJ3 is the vehicle that services it. That's an average of two passes per shift. Nine summonses were written with regard to those passes. So, nine people in the month of October parked in the Arden lot that didn't have a permit. They were issued summonses. Out of the 36 employees in the code bureau, we have 20 employees that are trained to drive the LPR car, and that's 56 percent. That comes every Saturday. Anybody that isn't trained that is working gets trained on it. So, hopefully, before too long, we'll have 100 percent compliance. That way, anybody that's working any particular shift can jump into PJ3, and we can go into the Arden lot more often. Okay, and next up, Chief Investigator Jimmy Medaka will give us our fat recap.
Good evening, Mayor, the board. I'm Jimmy Medaka, the chief investigator. Our area is focused in the last month, again, with the train station that has seen an increase with people hanging around. We've made an effort to bring that number down, whether it be offering resources for those that don't have anywhere to go instead of just issuing a ticket. We've been successful with that. We have, I believe, for November 14th's court date, 37 cases on the docket. 12 of those written out of the 34 were quality of life. Those numbers went down probably due to the weather and activity within the village. We focused on Perry Street, Linden, the railroad, as I stated, and the downtown business areas. Those that work in plainclothes with me focus on the shop owners and any incidents that they might have. We'll, we'll go in, we'll meet with them, and if they have any issues, we make note of that. We bring it to Chief Andy, and we go for our work from there. It's been a successful month, and that's my report.
Thank you. I understand you went to a drill, tabletop drill, the National Grid headquarters.
I did. I attended National, National Grid Drill. It was an exercise on November 2nd. It started early in the morning. It was an exercise that if there was an event in the harbor within the National Grid that had a spill within the village, not only was it extremely educational and informative, it laid out the groundwork of communication, resources, agencies that would be deployed, and how the village would handle it. It was a very successful meeting. I'm very grateful that I was able to attend. And this opens the door to other avenues of exercises in case the village had to deal with something of this magnitude. I believe the exercise, or the drill, started at 6:00 AM, the event, and we were able to address it as a village, as our resources that Chief Owen has put in place and the mayor has put in place that we could respond to something as critical as this. So, it was a very successful meeting with the National Grid.
It was great that National Grid actually included the village to participate and invited the participation of the village in the drill. I had a, I had an emergency, so I wasn't able to attend with you, but I was very grateful that we had representation there and that you saw that process and how it took, and how it took shape and that they know that we're willing and enable participant for the future.
Absolutely.
And we can, we can take some of the things that you learned from that and bring it back to our emergency operations center.
Absolutely.
At DPW.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
I just want to piggyback off of that, just in my conversation with Jimmy here about that. As much as he learned from them, they also learned from us. There were several things that they learned. They didn't know we had an emergency operations center, and they were obviously happy with the fact that we have that. They also didn't know that Jimmy and I are on call 24/7, that someone, God forbid, something happens at 2:00 in the morning, myself or Jimmy or both of us will respond. So, that was comforting, for lack of a better word, that they knew there was somebody here in the village. God forbid, something does happen that, you know, we'll get an immediate response. So, that was good, that, you know, there was learning on both ends. And it's always good, that's always positive when that happens. So, just to finish up, as usual, our Facebook page is up and running, Official Port Jeff Code Enforcement Bureau. Reach, if you have any questions or thoughts while you're out there during the day, you need to reach out to us, 631-774-0066. You can email me, aowen@portjeff.com. And always, for any non-emergency issue, you have a problem that you need Suffolk County to address, With that, anybody have any thoughts, questions, concerns?
Hi, Tracy Donnelly, 2 Stern Drive. I was just wondering if you ever got the answer yet around discharging your weapon and if you're covered by Port Jefferson? Are you indemnified by the village if you end up having to discharge your weapon?
I will defer that to the village attorney.
Those authorized to carry firearms in the village, including Chief Owen, are all covered by our insurance company.
By Port Jefferson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sir?
Good evening, Michael Martin, Bayview Terrace. You mentioned in your parking report that you have these readers of our license plates.
Yes.
And you specified that there were some violations in the Arden lot?
Yes.
What lot is that?
That's on Arden, it's the resident lot, it's for residents only.
Resident only.
So, when people have the residence, it used to be a sticker?
Right.
Now, you just, you can do it actually online now.
So, that got a lot of attention. That particular lot got a lot of attention, as you've just reported?
Not more than any other lot.
Okay.
But there was a gentleman that, at the last meeting, had asked how his tax dollars were going towards, towards that.
And at the last month's meeting, one of the residents inquired, is how often do you patrol the parking lots with regard to managed parking? And you said, "Once a day," twice a day.
I don't think I said, "Once a day." It's probably, it's more than once a day.
Well.
It's several times a shift, to be honest with you.
Yeah, well.
Especially downtown.
That's what I heard, and we kind of scoffed at that a little bit. Now, the Arden lot is only to look for stickers. What is the fine on that?
Offhand, I, I do believe it's $150.
$1 what?
$150, I do believe.
So, that's for non-residents, what you're looking for?
When a non-resident parks in a resident lot, and we happen to see that vehicle there, yes.
And because we have what's called managed parking, turnover is very important. And turnover has to do with people parking for longer than they paid for, for those that have to pay. We, as residents, don't have to pay.
Right.
What number of tickets are you giving out with regard to non-payment for overtime parking?
That's overtime parking. As far as a number, I don't have it. I can get it for you.
Okay.
If you want, but the top four, that was number two.
Right. So, you have 600 and some spaces in parking lots that are governed by the meters that require people to pay. And then, you have on-street parking. So, if you're going around a few times a day when meters are run by the minute, by the hour, how efficient is that with regard to dealing with people who park for longer than the period than they, than they paid for? How do you, how do you judge that? How do you administer that?
The way that the vehicle works is it will, it runs, it captures a license plate, and it's, split-second tells you what time it parked and what time it's due. And if that time has elapsed, it will let you know that a violation is due.
So, how often do they go around? Because that isn't, as you said, hourly.
We have one car, like I said.
You only have one car patrolling 600.
No, can I finish, please?
Yes, I'm sorry.
PJ3 is the only car that captures the license plates. If you look at PJ3, if you're ever out in the village, and it has these two black cameras on the, on the hood.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, any other cars, don't do that.
Right.
So, that's the only vehicle that we have.
So, that's your only enforcement, then, for overtime parking?
No, it's not, no.
So, Michael, why don't you come in and meet with Chief Owen and our parking administrator and really have an in-depth conversation? We'll show you the numbers.
Is there, is there an end game here, some point you're trying to make?
Well, yes. The question is, when we did it without, when we did, started it, we did it with numbers, parking space numbers.
Yes.
So, that could be seen on the computer of this, of any police, any code car. So, you knew right away which ones had paid for the time. If there's a car there and it says it's supposed to be empty and it's not a resident car, then it would get a violation. This is a system that you're using now that's different. So, I was just inquiring as to how accurate it can be and how often it is being done. I'll be happy to meet with you. I'd like to drive with you, actually, to see that.
I think your line of questioning is interesting and strategic. So, come on in, let's meet on this and figure all this out.
You have my phone number, you have my email address.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anybody else, ma'am?
It's not for you. Suzette Smukler, 22 Larita Gate. I'd like to first thank the officer that provided the numbers of traffic violations, speed violations. And I'd like to thank you on behalf of a few others because after the last meeting, a number of people have said that they had asked for that in the past and hadn't gotten it. So, thank you. Now, the second part, I don't pretend to believe it be a traffic officer, but some of us, based on what we've said when we've come here, we know that there are certain areas where there is definitely speeding going on and you don't need a radar gun to know it. If we have a suggestion like that, rather than taking up this kind of time, is there a place or a person to speak to about that? I mean, I don't have it figured out as well as Mr. Mart has one thing, but there's a couple of obviouses where if a police car was parked, it wouldn't take too much to see.
So, one of the numbers that you could call, if you want to talk about speeding or traffic violations taken in your neighborhood, is my office, 631-854-8689. You can leave us a message, myself, John, or Casey. We'll return your call within a few days. And then, we can plan a patrol check for the sector car to cover that specific area. Or we may be able to tell you, oh, you know what? We already have a patrol check. This is, this is what we have.
But again, thank you very much for bringing the numbers forward.
You're welcome.
Melissa Gianola, 23 Marokie Trail. I'm jumping on the speeding bandwagon conversation here. All right. Good evening, Mayor Shepro and Board of Trustees. Thank you, officers. I'm here tonight because I wanted to request signage on our block for slow and a reduction in speeding on our street. I live on Marokie Trail, and for Puritan Pilgrim in Marokie, we have resident speeders, and I'd like to learn the process on how I can get new signage on our street. We have dead-end streets. We have a lot of young children that live on these streets. Marokie Trail is known as the street where new parents walk their babies in their strollers. They're teaching their children to ride their bicycles. They're learning how to rollerblade, skateboard. People walk their dogs on our street. And all of the elementary school kids know that they can come down our street to ride their bikes safely. Unfortunately, we have residents on our street and visitors that drive down in excess of 35 miles an hour, up to 50. And our kids playing on that street, the street's not equipped to handle that speed. I did stop one of the drivers to ask them to slow down. Told them, "We have children on the block." The response was, "The village's speed limit is 35 miles an hour, and if I don't like it, take it up with the village." I don't like it, so consider this my taking it up with the village.
That's not the village's speed limit, though.
Not the village's speed limit, but that's what they said. So, I'm requesting that Puritan and Marokie have the official speed limit reduced to 15 miles per hour. I'd like new signage that states that. I'd also like to request a "Slow Children at Play" signage be placed at the intersection of Puritan and Marokie, and most importantly, that it is clearly present on Marokie Trail. The alternative is unthinkable of what will happen with this dangerous speeding down our street. It's the only way that I think we can ensure slow drivers on our road. So, I look forward to learning how we can possibly implement this, possible ETA to get new signage on our speed, on our street. Thank you.
For starters, I'll tell you that I'll go out there, I'll survey the area tomorrow morning, see where a good place to put the speed trailer would be.
Mm-hmm.
And we could deploy it out there for a two-week period to get some sort of data, to get the ball rolling on that.
That speed trailer is kind of a deterrent in and of itself, though, isn't it?
It is, but it's still, it's good to get it out there to have, you get a number of vehicles that are going by, and you do get a number of how many violators you do have, so.
Right. And the residents are aware that I was going to come speak tonight about the speed limit on our streets.
I commend you for coming out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else, anything, any thoughts, sir?
Charles Brock, 307 Myrtle Avenue. I have a comment for Suffolk. I attended the precinct commander's community meeting in the month of October. Found it extremely informative and intend to go again. And I have a question for the chief of the code. I have mentioned at least three times in the past, probably two times before you were the chief, about issues of parking on Scraggy Hill Road.
Okay.
All right. Now, it's kind of overcome by events because most of that occurs when there are sporting events. And the sport season is over, so it kind of isn't going to rear its ugly head until spring again. But I have mentioned people parking halfway in the road, cars parking in the bus-only lane, and then, the buses have to park in the residential area, and particularly, visiting students have to walk down the middle of the road to get to the bus because there's no sidewalks there. And, and I don't know if you know, but I'd like to know if any summonses have been issued. I drive that area all the time, and I have yet to see code there doing anything.
No, I'm not, I wouldn't say we're not there doing anything just because you don't see us there. I'm there quite often.
Well, but I know what you drive, so.
As far as your question about how many parking summonses, I can run a diagnostic and I can give that answer.
It needs to be enforced because, you know, we talked about the hazards and the speed bumps have been put in there, but people double parking, pulling U-turns in the middle of traffic, taking up the spaces for the buses, that needs to be addressed.
Absolutely.
And the other thing is, since this young lady here has spoken about speeding, Pine Tree Court is a, like a freeway. And I have looked, I mean, I, I am pretty good at judging speed and counting seconds between light poles. I have clocked a number of people at 60 miles an hour. And Pine Tree Court is the same situation. You have people pushing baby carriages. You have runners. You have a fair amount of kids on these electric scooters and electric bicycles, and they're all at hazard with, with the speeders. And, and, you know, ever since Pine Tree Court was opened up so that it's no longer a court, it's a shortcut. People do not want to deal with the multitude of stop signs on East Old Post. So, they come through, they, and a lot of these people aren't even residents in the area. They, they come up from Mount Sinai or wherever up onto Village Drive and Pine Tree Court, and, and they do this to avoid the stop signs. And I'd like to see a speed trailer, too.
Okay, sure. Something we can look into, absolutely.
I would appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you all for coming out. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Mayor?
I just want to make a comment. One of the hotspots for speeding is the high school, and I want to compliment Suffolk for their increased presence over, around the high school because we've had, it's quite a dangerous situation over there in the morning. Just last week, this isn't working, but just last week, we had a crossing guard almost get run over, over there by the high school. If we can keep up the pressure over there, I think it's going to help in the long run. Thanks again for your presence.
Thank you, Trustee Laux, for bringing that up. You know that Chief Owen was going to take a look at that based on that, that concern expressed, so. Yep. Seems like almost every street in Port Jefferson has speeding issues. Okay. We'd like to enter into our public comment section, which that sort of was too, but if there are other areas that you have to discuss and report to the Board of Trustees, issues, concerns, the time is now.
Hi, my name is Drew Sora, 2 Stern Drive. I just wanted to let you all know, last Friday, November 3rd, we had the very first meeting with Deputy Mayor Casse and Trustee Laux of the Youth Council, with Deputy Mayor Casay and Trustee Laux of the Youth Council, which is one of the newly revisited committees that have just been started up again. But I just wanted to really extend my appreciation to you, Deputy Mayor, to you, Trustee Laux, for being there four months ago when I first came here to my second meeting. You came up to me after, and you asked me about this because of how I spoke, and you said, "This is something that I think we really need." And I emailed you later that night, and you were right on it. You made me feel like I was the top priority. And in August, I wanted to meet to discuss further details, and it was like so quick. It was so quick. And we got a meeting down, and we discussed everything that we wanted to do. I learned about your history of helping youth in the past, and it truly made me realize that I was a top priority for you. And that was really, really important to me. And you gave me, you gave me your word at that meeting. You said, "I'll get this done by October." And I said, "I completely trust you." And lo and behold, at that second September meeting, it was announced, and I was so, so grateful for that. And I also want to extend my appreciation to Trustee Laux, because he's who I'll be working with in the, in the future. And he is an amazing, amazing person who has a lifetime of community service behind him. And I'm so, so grateful that I'll be able to work with you on this. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Drew. I know Trustee Laux and I will be reporting on the meeting, and I see two other attendees from that meeting. But I just ensure to say, this is a youth council, something that I had heard of, of the past in Port Jefferson Village, and had always been very interested in, but these things don't happen unless there is a, both an individual to lead and then a group of youth who want to make it happen. We, as trustees, cannot make any of this happen. It really, you know, a youth council is something that must come from the youth of our village. And so, you know, I just turn all the thanks back to the group that showed up on, on Friday, and we'll, we'll report more later, if Trustee Laux wants to.
Yeah, let's save those reports for the trustees' time, and this is the public comment time. But thank you for your comment, young man. Anyone else? Yes?
I'm Narin Kierkorn from 15 Rosita Lane, and I just wanted to come up again in support of what Drew said. We really want to just express our gratitude for the Board of Trustees, our mayor, and our deputy mayor for this opportunity for the youth, because as you guys might see in here tonight, there aren't many students in here. And we really hope that with this new platform for us, we'll really be able to grow closer with our town and our community, and also just be able to speak freely among ourselves and really get closer with our hometown. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Yes?
Hi, Zina Yaginski, Two Rosita Lane, Port Jeff. First of all, it's wonderful to see the youth here, and I just want to highlight the fact that the, that Drew and the other folks from the high school were invited to participate as part of the Civic Association. So, what I'd like to really point out is that it's wonderful that we finally have sort of a Civic Association, the high school, the Board of Trustees, all working together and in conversation, so. Thanks, guys.
Bruce Miller, one zero nine Scraggy Hill Road, Port Jefferson. I have been appointed to the Power Repowering Committee by the mayor, and I want to thank her for that appointment. I hope that I can put my talents to good use. I would like to comment also that I think it's a really sterling committee that she has assembled. We've got some people with some very serious backgrounds. Drew, of course, was a trustee. Suzette Smookler in the room was a trustee and worked, we worked together on this issue many years ago on the school board. Zina's got a really excellent background. There are some, some people that I don't know and would be glad to meet. We are possibly, in the very near future, facing another glide path down, so it is good that we are getting busy and active once more. The former attorney, Brian Egan, said of Port Jefferson Village regarding Brookhaven Town, Suffolk County, Liper National Grid, that we were the mouse that roared, and it's time that we speak up again. This has, this has been languishing. So, basically, I just, again, want to thank the mayor, A, for my appointment, but B, for a really first-rate committee with a lot of people with excellent backgrounds. And there's some interesting people that I will meet and will be glad to meet. Thank you.
It's a working group. It's a working group.
The working.
Yeah. Michael Mart?
As you know, many of you know, I was a merchant in the village for thirty-four years on East Main Street with my wife. We understand how businesses work or should work in the downtown area, Port Jeff, the lower part. And my concern is that I want to thank you for re-establishing the parking committee. And as if I read it correctly, and that nice notice that you put up, that the parking committee will be, you're working with the Business Improvement District, and to form it, it'll be made up of merchants and residents. Is that the extent of the, of the committee? Membership categories?
So, Michael, I'm going to try and stay on in process here, and let's have this conversation offline or shoot me an email. The committee is, I will answer, one question is, the committee is, is, is working within the bid. The bid is running the committee. So, the bid brings the members in, and I mentioned to you earlier that you're a welcome participant in that, on that committee. So, I can't have a conversation with you back and forth here, but.
Well, it's not that. But in order for a parking committee to work, you need all interested parties.
Okay.
And it's, and it's under the auspices of this village. It should be residents, merchants.
Agreed.
Property owners, trustee, code enforcement, so we all work together to make sure that it's working. And for the bid, they're made up primarily of business owners. And that won't work, I don't think. And it isn't under the, if, you say I can attend the meetings, but if it's not under the, if it is under the auspices of the village, as it should be, we're talking about tens of thousands of dollars or more. Is that correct, what comes in through the meters? I'll ask the treasurer, if I may.
What comes into the meter?
Yeah.
Hundreds of thousands.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, the village has to be aware of where that money is coming from, how it's coming in, and how it's being handled. And, and I'm not challenging on that, but I don't see that there's a trustee that will be assigned to it, or the code officer, to, to answer the questions that are required of making sure that it's being handled properly. And it should be here in the village, under the auspices of the, of this government. Am I wrong in assuming that that's not the case?
I'm noting your comments. I am noting your comments, and the conversation can continue, but I'm not, this is a public comment session, not a public conversation between the mayor and Michael Mart.
That's my comment. Okay.
But I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Tracy Donnelly, Two Stern Court. So, I hate to beat a dead horse, although it's hard to tell, I know, but, so you said they're indemnified and insured under the village from discharging their firearms? Because we, I've been concerned about it, as many residents have, so I went to Patrog to look into what they did there, and it was over six figures to add on a firearms policy to the insurance policy. So, I'm wondering, one, if they are covered by insurance and indemnified, if they discharge their weapons, in addition to whether that's yes or no, and I know you said yes, and I believe you, what was the cost of that to us?
You want to shoot us an email, and we'll look into it for you? You can send it to the clerk.
Should I shoot it to someone else?
I believe she already put in a foil for that information.
I didn't yet, but I'm going to, yeah. I'm going to, I said I just want to stop by and see the clerk, so this way I can follow the right process.
What I will tell you is what I know, if the mayor will allow me to brief answer. The collective bargain agreement covers those who are allowed under our code as constables and peace officers to carry, and it was verified by the village clerk that they are covered by our insurance company. What that cost is, as the attorney, I have no idea.
You're talking about carrying, I'm talking about discharging. So, if I was meant to discharge my weapon, what happens then?
Gave you all the information I currently have.
Understood. Okay, so then I'd be able to foil that, so I can have that information. And there's a cost associated for that? You don't know? Okay, I'll follow up.
Foil off, sir, I'm not the clerk.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Charles Brock, three oh seven Myrtle Avenue. I have a couple of comments and a couple of requests. The comment is that I approached the building department about some illegal construction going on in my neighborhood. Illegal in the sense that it was being conducted without a permit and potentially with unlicensed contractors. And they responded extremely fast and issued, so my kudos to the building inspector and the building department. I have a question regarding the speed tables on Scraggy Hill Road. Regardless of what I think about them and the fact that, you know, they're an aggravation during the summer when there's no school, and in the middle of the night, when people used to drive around them because there's absolutely nobody in the area, but they are what they are. But my problem with them is, and I would like Highway to take a look at this, extending them all the way to the edge of the shoulders creates a problem. Creates a problem for pedestrians, because there are no sidewalks. It creates a problem for people walking dogs, pushing baby carriages, the multitude of kids on the electric scooters. I've already had one neighbor trip over the thing, walking on the shoulder of the road. If they were ended at the lines which delineate the shoulder, you still could not drive around the speed bumps. Those shoulders are too narrow. But I believe they create a hazard by extending them all the way beyond the edge of the shoulder to the dirt. So, I would just like Highway or whoever to have a look at that and see if it's feasible to remove the portion of the speed bump that extends across the shoulder. The other thing is, I'd like to compliment the trustees and the attorney on the changes to the code regarding Airbnb's. I, I've read that extensively. I don't know if it's been adopted yet, but I've read extensively what it says. And I'm a little confused because.
Sorry to interrupt, sir, I'm going to recuse myself from the room.
Well, maybe you ought to stay, because you could probably answer a question.
There's been no change to the code where Airbnb.
Mayor, if I just may, from a legal perspective.
Yes, please.
Trustee Casay, you can, it's public comment, don't feel like business is there.
Yeah.
Feel free to say. I appreciate, you don't, you can say you're recusing, so you don't necessarily have to leave it at work. I'm just letting you know that.
Well, I've read this extensively, and.
There has been no change to the code of the short-term or long-term rental code. There's been no change. I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Well, I believe it defines Airbnb's and pretty much prohibits them.
Was that for Port Jefferson, or? No, it's, it's, doesn't, hasn't, hasn't happened.
Okay, then it's proposed. I mean, it's online, I've read it. I don't have, I should have brought the number with me, but if I had to guess, it's two fifty-seven, but, in any case, it defines an Airbnb as someplace where there is no owner present.
There's just been no change, if you're talking about the change to the code, there has been no change.
So, Airbnb's are legal then, in the village?
There's been no change to the code since my, since I started as mayor, so I'm not, and nor has Attorney Moran worked on that code.
Well, I'll research it further, but I was confused what I read, that there seemed to be a giant.
Mayor, if I may, for an issue of clarification, a bed and breakfast is an old term that I don't know off the top of my head whether this village is allow, obviously, they allow bed and breakfast, because trustee Casay just left the room, which some people in the modern area, modern era, just smashed those terms together, Airbnb and bed and breakfast, and they are different.
Yes, they are.
Can be different. So, I agree with the mayor's comments that as far as I know, since I've been here, since the mayor's been here, there's been no changes to the code to that respect. And what you might be reading about bed and breakfast might be just a definition from an older code or an older time, or nothing's been done to attack short-term.
I will take a look at it, and I will email you with more specifics.
Okay.
But after reading it, I, I saw what I believed to be a giant loophole.
Okay.
Into what is a legitimate bed and breakfast versus these Airbnb's that people post online, and people stay one or two nights or whatever, and, you know, the chaos that those things have created, particularly in Nassau County. So, I will, I will have more particulars, and I will address you with email or speak to you again.
Perfect.
Thanks.
Thank you. Suzette?
Suzette Smookler, twenty-two Larita Gate. Since everybody's taken a second turn tonight, it must be for lack of, I can't help myself. But I did hear some people who seem to be more knowledgeable with the wording than I was. So, somehow or another, two of something that's going to diminish speeding, I might want to ask for three. Mayor, you and I had an extensive discussion about this, I don't know, eight, ten months ago. So, I guess what I'm asking for, and I don't mean a blinking light, you know, yellow, I mean the type of lights that are near schools that are telling somebody how fast they're driving. One is very, very much needed on North Country Road, and the debate became, and I don't want to get back into that kind of thing, as to whether or not what I was asking for back then was on village property, or whether it wasn't. Now, I'm telling you, it is village property, or somebody needs to go there and take down all the signs like "Welcome to Port Jefferson," and "This is the Lions Club," and it used to have the trustees on it. That side of the street is village property. It's not Mount Sinai, it's not Port Jeff Station, and it's not the town of Brookhaven. So, having one of those speed, whatever you're calling them, strategically placed when it comes around that bend would solve all the problems. And I problem I won't be the person that goes for three times. Thank you.
Thank you. Not to be outdone.
I guess everybody gets a second turn. Two things, Melissa Gianola, twenty-three Marocchi Trail. I just wanted to say thank you regarding the resident portal and reporting issues for the highway department, potholes, streetlights out, reviewing things on our street, immediate responses. And I really appreciate that. I think more residents should use the resident portal instead of complaining on Facebook, because it gets fixed right away. So, I wanted to say thank you. And I also just want to say, please don't take down the Port Jeff Lions Club sign, because the Lions Club does a lot of donations for people in need within the village, so please leave that sign be. Thank you.
Mayor Grant?
May I distribute these to you?
Can you give it to the clerk?
To the board?
And to the clerk?
There's just several copies of the same thing.
Mayor Sheprow and Deputy Mayor Casay, I'm here to express my opposition to the current asphalt paving project at Jean Garan Harborfront Park in Port Jeff. It's come to our attention that the project is rapidly progressing with seemingly little consideration for public input, environmental impact, and long-term repercussions. The decision to pave every pathway in the park with asphalt extending to the waterfront is deeply concerning for a multitude of reasons. The original plan dated August one, two thousand twenty-two, which I handed you, did not call for the northernmost walkway to be touched, just the paths anterior to the park. Your step towards paving all the pathways, including one in which the main sculpture stands, is not necessary and is harmful to the environmental well-being and engineered design of the park. Moreover, redoing these pathways with asphalt is notorious for its heat retention. Moreover, redoing these pathways with asphalt is notorious for its heat retention, posing a significant risk to pets and children who regularly utilize the park. Additionally, its impermeability is a known contributor to flooding, particularly problematic given our proximity to the waterfront. Bob Tmilowicz worked tirelessly to engineer this park, and in particular, drainage of the grassy areas and crushed bluestone pathways was critical. They required careful consideration to prevent runoff and erosion. The walking path in proximity to east-west bulkhead on the north side of the property was particularly problematic. So the park was designed with deep underground trenching that contains perforated plastic pipe covered with gravel and crushed bluestone on top. This bluestone gravel and underground piping allows for proper flow of rain and storm water buildup. Aesthetically, the use of asphalt in what is fundamentally a natural, non-urban space undermines the park's natural beauty. It's perplexing why alternatives that blend more harmoniously with the environment, like grasscrete, a permeable stamped concrete, were not seriously considered. These materials offer the added benefit of permeability, preventing water runoff and associated flooding, and are much more in tune with the park's natural setting. If the water can't be absorbed, it will runoff, pool up, or cause damage to the green space or worse. To rush to finalize the project and utilize a ton of Brookhaven grant of 60,000 plus 30,000 by year-end has led to hasty decision-making and a lack of thorough planning. It's astounding that 250,000 is being spent merely to utilize a $90,000 grant. This is not only a poor financial decision, but it also demonstrates a lack of due diligence, responsible management of public funds. Moreover, the speed at which this project is moving forward suggests deliberate disregard for public opposition and potential outcry. It's crucial for public projects to be transparent, to have plans prepared, and to be considerate of the communities they serve. It's unacceptable to proceed at such a pace without approved plans allowing for adequate public consultation and addressing potential concerns. We're demanding an immediate halt to the project to allow time for thorough revision of the chosen materials, costs involved, and the potential environmental impact. We also call for a more transparent and inclusive decision-making process that genuinely considers public feedback. The park is a cherished community asset, and it's essential that its development is handled with care and consideration it deserves. I, for one, stand against asphalting of the park. I turn towards the hardening of the face of the village in spite of the hard work the original 60 members the Harborfront Park Committee put in when considering the beautification of this prime waterfront jewel. We look forward to a prompt response and are prepared to escalate our concerns if necessary to ensure the responsible development of Jean Garand Harborfront Park. Thank you.
Former mayor, we thank you for your comments. We, in fact, have met with an engineer and have asked about the use of stamped concrete versus the use of asphalt. So there is some commentary on that, which I'd like to share with everyone here tonight. The first one is that asphalt is the industry standard, not just in the U.S., but worldwide. Part of the reason it's the industry standard is that it is maintenance-free. And unlike the crushed bluestone, it actually is ADA compliant, which is a tremendous factor or was a tremendous factor in the decision-making, as well as, of course, the cost differential. It's important to note, too, that as opposed to the stamped concrete, the asphalt is much more sanitary because animal feces and other dirt and problematic type residue does not fall into it and can be more easily washed away. Again, less costly, and not just less costly for installation, but also for maintenance and durability. I'm sorry to interrupt, this was to be part of my report to the board, so I thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mart, second bite at the apple? Okay. Third bite, third bite. This is a green apple. This one's a green one.
A clarification.
That was Honeycrisp before, right?
Yes, that's right. I'm hungry. A clarification, I think, on what this gentleman was talking about, that there, with regard to short-term rentals and Airbnb's. And you don't have to leave the room, please. I'll wait.
There's no decision going on.
I know. Okay, okay.
Here are the residents.
Over a year ago, well over a year ago, the issue of short-term rentals, otherwise known as Airbnb's, was brought to the attention of the board. And the board looked at it. I went to the planning board to see, to the planning department, to see if short-term rentals were legal. They are not. You can, I learned that you have to have, if you want to rent your house, you have to have a permit to do that, too, so that it's properly inspected. Airbnb's are definitely different than B&B's. A B&B requires a permit, a revocable permit, a permit for which there is a public hearing. The neighbors know and have an opportunity to speak about issuance of that permit, whether to approve or disapprove. That's not true with the illegal Airbnb's that are currently in our village. So there was a code change recommended by Mr. Harris. And not to get too far in the woods, but what it said is that there should be the recommendation, no rental for less than 30 days, which would limit...
Well, we're very excited that we are welcoming a new and a very experienced and executive planning professional to our building and planning department a week from tonight, so...
Could you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Very excited that we are welcoming a new executive planner, experienced, 40 years, former trustee of the village of Port Jefferson, and who has been working for Suffolk County's planning department for about 30 years. And he's joining the village a week from tonight as the director of that department. And we're very excited to bring him on board and look forward to him leading through that code initiative.
So Airbnb's or short-term rentals will be of interest to him?
It'll be brought back up onto the forefront.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comments? Oh, yes. Come on up. We don't know what this comment is about, though. Hold on, hold on, wait a minute. She might be talking about short-term rentals.
Victoria Sneedon, 123 Arlington Avenue. I'm a member of the youth council that recently just had their first meeting at the village center. But before this meeting, as well as during, I was informed that this group was prompted to pay for using this rental space or this village space. However, I also know that the porch of cheerleaders was able to use village hall for free for, I think, a car wash. How is it determined who has to pay and who gets to use these village spaces for free?
We are really wrestling with that one. We have been working through what past practices have been and what we're trying to put forward for future practices. And we're trying to make everybody and every aspect of requesting village property, taxpayer property, equal. Like, everybody's equal, right? But there are so many past practices that we have been confronted with that we just didn't want to, like, pull the rug out from under everyone to say, "Sorry, policy's changing. We actually want to take some time and look at the policy." Maybe your youth council can actually help us take a look at some of that and help us make some decisions or recommendations, as it were.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, one more public comment?
Sorry, it's me again.
Nope, it's not, not, not a problem.
I have thick skin. So just because we were talking about that, and I know that there's been a big ethics push and you're posting committees and people are applying. Will you be posting online who's part of what committees, so everybody knows their response? Because I think if you sent in, will you find out if you're chosen for one or not? And how will you know?
It'll be in my report, so rather than go back and forth, I'll be reporting on the process for the Make a Difference Committee, council, board, or group.
So you're gonna talk about the process and if it's posted?
Be talking about it, yes.
Okay. And so back to this young lady's question or comment. So I guess when you're thinking of ethics, then I think there would probably be a difference if you're an employee of the village, being allowed to use the village property along with the water. And honestly, I was really glad that the cheerleaders got to have the fundraiser. But I think it adds a different type of ethics when you're talking about an employee who actually works here getting to use village resources and village property versus councils or youth council who may or may not have the resources. So I just wanted to make that as a comment for consideration when you're reviewing your past practices, but maybe spend more time thinking about what you're gonna do in the future, right? Because if you kind of ran on change and moving forward, so maybe start thinking about what we should be doing in the future around fairness and ethics and everything else because you, half of, well, more, three of you were actually part of the past administration. So that's it. Thank you.
Okay, me either, but that's okay. All right. Any other public comments? Okay. Closing down the public comments section. Does that require a resolution? Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your public comments. Our next session will be our staff reports, starting with Treasurer Stephen Gaffka.
Good evening, mayor and board. Just to go over some of what my office has been doing over the last month. I'm currently, and as you will see it on the agenda, I'm working with the clerk to get an RFP together to get our capital assets inventoried so that we can get that remark off of our future audits. We need to be able to depreciate our assets, so it's good to get an inventory of all, of everything that the village owns that's worth over, it's between $500 and $1,000, depending on what it is. So we're talking, you know, sidewalks and roads and buildings and equipment. And to have a full inventory that hasn't quite existed so that we can have that going forward. So that's a big priority. That's one of the things that we've been working on. Another one is wrote up a draft procurement policy with the help of the clerk. We have sent that over for review to our advisor, Charlene Kegel, to take a look at. We're hoping to get some more feedback on it, some little tweaking, but it's a more comprehensive procurement policy so that it makes it very clear what everybody's expectations are in purchasing products with village resources and what, you know, what the steps are and what, everything that that entails. So we're working on that. Also, you'll see that there's a proposed credit card policy. I think it's one of those things, and I looked to the state OSC website for their best practices to develop it.
That's the Office of the State Controllers website?
Yes. I think it's important to allow the employees, the department heads, to have the ability to get things that they need when village hall is not open. And that's a big impediment if we take that ability away from them, that they won't be able to, if something breaks at 6:30 in the morning and they need to go get something, we want them to be able to fix it right away. So by having this policy, it allows there to be restraint on the credit cards. It also allows best practices to keep it in check and auditable so that everybody, you know, follows the same rules.
Great.
Then I just want to touch on quickly the three budget amendments that you're gonna see on the agenda. One of them is for parking fees. It's increasing revenues and expenses. It's essentially, it's a wash for the budget, but we use online payment called Hunk Mobile. Hunk Mobile, they deposit the money once a month, net of the fees. So for whatever reason, that wasn't recorded in the budget, the fees, or the additional revenue. So what this does is actually brings up the actual fees and the actual revenue that we're taking in from the parking meters. So it's a wash. It's no net effect to the budget, but I think it's important to have the right numbers when we're trying to analyze how much money we're actually bringing in. So that's one of them. The second one is Harborfront Park. It's the budget amendment. So as you'll see in there, I use interfund transfers and I also use the grants. When you're budgeting for a capital project, you need to define what your expenses are gonna be and where the revenue's coming from. So within the general fund is an interfund transfer line, and that's used specifically for capital projects. Why I'm doing it this way, as opposed to in the past, the two previous budget amendments last month tailed to actual budgetary general fund, A-fund items, which is not something that you can do with that function, unless I was taking the money away from it as a budget transfer, which I don't want to do because we have capital projects that need to happen. So that's how it differentiates. And what I'll do is basically charge the expense to the A-fund, interfund transfer and move it over to capital so that we can pay for this project. And then we'll get the money in from the grants after it's finished, and it'll close out the project so that it's, you know, there's no issue trying to account for the auditing trail on it. The third one is paving. So the 2023 paving project is already finished. It was done in August, but the budget was never put in place for it. It was roughly a $430,000, $440,000 project. We actually were able to get, I think it was National Grid contributed for part of that, as well as CHIPS. So it was submitted for CHIPS. We're expecting roughly $320,000 from CHIPS.
Now, for the general public who don't understand what, it's not the California Highway Patrol, is it? Okay, so CHIPS is...
Yeah, it's Consolidated Highway Improvement. So basically, you know, the state gives you certain funds. You have weather-related funds called EWR. You have pave over potholes, which is the POP program. Pave NY, which is for roads listed in the state's actual listing of roads and highways. They have it for every municipality. And then your actual, you know, CHIPS, which is really any state road or any road within that state highway system. And it can be done for highway resurfacing, which is what we did this year. So setting that budget kind of balances out everything and it lets everybody know this is how much it costs and this is where that money's going, in the capital fund. One additional item is that I met with the highway superintendent and Enterprise Fleet Management. They operate our leases for the village. There are nine vehicle leases with our code and highway department, and building and planning has one as well. And we pay a certain amount of money every month towards these cars so that they are allowed, they depreciate in value, and over a course of time, we can turn them in and get new fleet of vehicles. My understanding is, talking with Enterprise and with Steve Gallagher, the highway superintendent, is that the plan eventually was that we would get the entire fleet onto this program. So I'm working with Enterprise to see if that's a feasible option in the future, if there are ways to bring the costs down, how we can be able to reduce those payments because they're quite expensive. It costs about $100,000 a year to manage all of our cars. Now, we're getting new vehicles every three or four years, so, you know, you can do the math what that would cost. Some of these trucks are very expensive, so it's not clear whether we're actually saving money or not. So I'm looking into that with the highway superintendent, and I hope to be able to come up with a cost-saving plan for the taxpayers.
Great. Thank you.
Question. I had asked Stephen earlier about the financial statements that are on the site. Maybe other people here have looked at it. It wasn't updated since August 31st.
Yeah, that was the last one that I had submitted. I think I submitted that towards the end of September, the first week of October. I'm trying to play catch-up with getting everything going. I did actually...
Turn it off.
I strongly recommend it to Stephen. We will get...
Go ahead, Stephen.
So I actually, while the executive session was going on, I emailed it over to the clerk for September to get posted to the website, and then I hope to have October done within the next, by next week. So that that's, and then we get on a nice rotating schedule where it's about a couple weeks after the month ends. I want to make sure all the bank recs get done. I want to make sure all the bank recs get done first, so that there's no major changes, and then we can release the financials.
That's pretty much a new process, so little baby steps, and now we're catching up, right?
I'm trying to speed it up.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you doing it. Okay, Clerk Perillo.
Hi, good evening again, everyone. I am having a singular topic this evening, and that is requests for proposals. So I'm going to quickly review the requests for proposals that are the most recent, starting with the website, because that is one of our most urgent ones. I reported earlier about this, perhaps in another session, however, we received approximately 59, I believe, responses to our request for an update, modernization, revamping of the website. We have completed a Phase 1 look at the proposals that we received, and we are going into round two later this week. We hope to have a recommendation by the next session, the 20th, so we look forward to that very much. We currently have an RFP for the purchase of chemicals at our country club slash golf course, that is a multitude of chemicals, variety, and that opens on the 9th of November at 2:00 p.m., similarly on the 9th of November at 2:00 p.m., again for the golf course, we have the renovation of 31 bunkers. Again, all of these have been noticed in the New York State Contract Reporter, we are hoping for, again, a wide variety of responses, so that we have vendors to choose from, and so that we can avail ourselves of, hopefully, especially for the chemicals, hopefully, volume discounts, so that we can save some taxpayer dollars. So that's the expected outcome, and we hope to be able to report on that. Returning back to the walkways for a moment, at the park, we do have onsite inspection daily, for example, on Friday, the 27th, was the first day, we closed the park, we installed fencing, we removed all the benches, we put them in the same location that they were in, to ensure for proper reinstallation. It's details like those that will make the difference on a project of this type, and with the timing that we have, of course, we have sometimes rain delays, as we did on the 30th, where we don't have rain, on the 31st, we cut grass, for example, we prepared excavation for the concrete footings and the pavers. On Wednesday, again, we had rain, but just so that you know, this is a synopsis of reports that I receive daily on the project, either verbally or in writing. And coming up, we are looking for complete trenching, and we're going to start pouring concrete footings on both sides of the paths to install the pavers. Again, we're always weather-dependent. That work is a little bit laborious, literally, because it's done by hand, concrete trucks cannot go into the park, and therefore, it is labor-intensive. So we are hoping to preserve our timing, even though that takes a lot of extra effort. So I wanted to call everyone's attention to that. Also, lastly, I wanted to...
Can I add something to the, while you're on the Harborfront Park?
Yes, ma'am.
So there are a lot of patchy areas around Harborfront Park that have been, I guess, the result of all the activities, events, concerts, and whatnot, there are a lot of dirt patches. So at the recommendation of, actually, our Director of Recreation, Renee Lemberman, and also our engineer, it was, it was recommended that we seed while the parks closed.
Yes.
So we took advantage of, you know, repairing the grassy, ungrassy areas, and there might be a technical term for that, Rebecca, I don't know, but that we needed, that needed, we're badly in need of repair, and they've been in disrepair for a very long time. So we took advantage of that, and the Parks Department went out and, and did some seeding, and overseeding.
Yes, thank you for adding that, that was our crew, and we thank them for that, because they were able to work around the independent contractor schedule, and so we do thank them. Thank you, Mayor, for bringing that up. I wanted to let everyone know that Village Hall will be closed tomorrow, owing to Election Day, and closed on Friday, in honor of Veterans Day.
Okay, thank you, Clerk Perillo.
Thank you.
Village Board reports, we're, we're starting with Trustee Deputy Mayor Cassay.
Hey, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to, Stephen, I just wanted to tack on a question, if I may. The warrants, can we get an update on how it's going with switching to one time a month? And are those also going to be posted? It's like asking you a question while you're chewing something.
Well, listen, yes, the answer's going to be, they will be posted. It's going well, I'm working with staff to develop, basically, it ends up being two warrants, we have...
Can we, can we hear Stephen's answer online? Stephen, if you wouldn't mind, if that's not working, you could stand up by this podium. Thank you. Make sure it's on green.
There you go, Steve, right here.
It's just a prop.
It's all right. I needed to stretch, anyway. So the warrants are going to get posted online, as soon as they're, they're available, which will be next week. And I'm working with staff to develop the best way to go about it, it's a big change from the way that it's been done here in the past. And, you know, when you pay bills every two weeks, you know, it's, it's a smaller volume, but you tend to move very quickly through it all. So what this allows is for everything to be on one document, where it can be reviewed ahead of time, and it really allows for a little more transparency. But with, your question with staff, they're doing very well with it. We're going to have two warrants, one for everything that needs to be paid, and then one that will detail all of the prepaid items that we're allowed to pay, like utility bills, all of those types of things, they will show up on the other warrant. So we'll have those two documents next week, to be distributed and then posted online.
Brilliant, thank you.
Welcome.
All right, so for my report, so as liaison to the Conservation Advisory Council, they have been continuing to look at the issue of gas-powered leaf blowers in the village. They had proposed conducting a survey for village residents to sort of, this is modeled on a survey that they had found, a municipality in New Jersey had conducted, to, to ask residents themselves, would they like to see some sort of time limitation, or, or, you know, some reduction of use, the ability to use gas-powered leaf blowers in their village, because of the noise issues, the, you know, the, the environmental issues, the, the air quality of issues, all of it. And so in bringing this to, internally, we had conversations about looking first at village policies related to gas-powered equipment use by our own staff members, because it's very difficult to ask residents to do, you know, if, that they might change their habits if the village itself is not changing our own. So the next step there is to request, I plan to request meetings with the supervisor of DPW, as well as Parks, and their respective liaisons, to have conversations about, you know, what, sort of bring forward different examples that we've seen in other villages of policies that they've implemented to reduce the use of gas-powered equipment, namely leaf blowers, and see what might, we might be able to work out internally, and then report back to the Board of Trustees with that, as well as the CAC, and keep that conversation going. The meeting with Trustee Laux and the student group, again, was on Friday, the 3rd, it was a great, great time listening to the youth of our community. I'd, you know, as Drew had outlined, he had spoken up at a meeting, he'd said, you know, there was this youth council, what's the, the chance of getting it going, and I said exactly what I said before, is it, we don't get that going, that's something that, that the youth have to say, this is something we're interested in doing, and we, you know, we have the power to provide support for that, but it's something really youth-driven, and so, you know, it's great to listen and, and share goals for a structure, you know, talked to Drew about hoping to hold a meeting by October, and we, you know, pretty much hit that goal at the tail end. This meeting was great, I was, it was very informational, I know Trustee Laux is going to report on this as well, learning about, you know, from about a dozen students in our community, what they wanted from a relationship with their government. And I, I have to say, it was one of the most satisfying meetings to me that I've had in a, in a long time, to see that we have so many youth in the community who want to have, have this voice and learn from those of us who are elected staff, and, and potentially see themselves in these roles in the future, which is something that, you know, we, we could all use in all of our different communities, to make sure that these leaders are not the leaders of the future, but the, the leaders of today, they're building those skills, and, and they're, they're ambitious, they want to help the village with volunteer opportunities, seek perhaps internship opportunities, and, and in turn, you know, especially we have a liaison to the schools, there's issues that, you know, the, the village can, can, you know, assist with bringing to light and helping out, because, you know, like was said before, we're all in this together, and the more voices and perspectives we have. So I really thank those students for, you know, lighting that fire again. I know we're going to speak internally about what that looks like from the village side, but I can personally, you know, say thank you to each of those students who showed up, because, you know, it really, it, it gives me hope for, for the now and the future. So thank you. And then we're, I know we left it, sort of as the, the, the end of it was, they're going to speak about structuring, you know, what's their ideal structure, and planning another meeting, and where, what, when. So we'll stay tuned and continue liaising on that. At the Beach Street Community Garden, we are winding down, it's the end of the season, I don't know if anyone else had to scrape frost off your windshield the other day, but 'tis the, 'tis the season, so we're done with gardening. We are looking to gather on Saturday, November 18th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The gardeners who can attend are going to show up, any community volunteers, and then we're also, again, it's a, it's a big student night, I want to thank the student athletes who are going to show up to, to help spread wood chips between the garden beds, this was something that was done when the garden was established years ago, wood chips do break down, and so this is a great way to, you know, beautify and maintain village parkland, and really grateful to the volunteers who are going to help make that happen. I'll be reaching out to our head of DPW to see if we could use our own wood chips as well in that project, as per suggestion by the mayor.
What a great idea.
I'll be, and then at, I'm excited to, to announce that I'll be presenting at the Second Annual By-State Sustainable and Resilient Communities Virtual Workshop on Thursday, December 7th. I've been working with Elizabeth Hornstein from Seegrant and others for a few years now, really liaising back and forth, our needs as a village, they've been offering us resources, and so they've, they've asked if I would present sort of on a municipal perspective of, you know, working with these mitigation issues, climate mitigation issues. So I'm really excited for that, it's free for anyone to attend, if, if anyone chooses to attend. And that is my report.
Thank you. So I just have a quick question about the youth council. Is there a, an advisor from the school district working with these students?
No, I think, oh, go ahead, Stan.
Simple answer is no. They're, it's such a young organization, we haven't gotten into it, they're still working on what their bylaws are going to be, and what their goals are going to be, and it's just starting, so...
And I, I get the impression that there's, there's student council, sorry, there's student council at school, but this is something other than that, where the, you know, a le, a, just like our committees have liaisons, perhaps a trustee would be the liaison to this group, to have that outside-of-school, you know, governmental experience. It's my understanding from, from the students.
I look forward to hearing more about it, and talking through all those aspects that have not yet been discussed.
Absolutely.
Related to public, you know, to village government.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I think, like, like everything, if any of the, the mayor, the board has comments to liaise back, I think, you know, Stan's sort of the, the point person. I'd stepped in because of my background with working with, with teenagers, but, you know, we want to make this a two-way street, and make sure that, you know, we're working on this all, all together to make the most of it.
There is another group that's also come forward, and it's primarily made up of the, through the athletic department, Adam, the athletic director, projects that the village may want to get help with. One big thing is coming up, November 18th and 19th, I believe, that this group is going to be coming down and help us spread the mulch around the community garden. But as I said before, this youth council is in its infant stages, we don't have any...
Just thinking about, you know, the redundancies of, of these organizations that are coming out of the school district, like the environmental club, and the student government, and the athletic, you know, the student athletes working through the athletic director, just hoping and encouraging some sort of mentor or advisor from the district, so that there is that, you know, back and forth between, between the district and the, and the government.
Adam, I think has kind of taken on that role, he will be with that group, so...
Yeah, and, and I think with the, my understanding with the youth council is, you know, it'd be great if there was a, a teacher, or even someone higher up in the hierarchy of, of the school, to sort of be representative from that side, but my understanding is the youth are looking to us as the village board, as the village electives, to, you know, be, be the working partner in that relationship, because it is an outside-of-school activity for them to, to gather and, and learn, and, you know, the outside-of-school learning opportunities, I know that I engaged in changed my life, and, you know, I'm really happy to see them seeking this out, I think it's very strong.
Next up is Trustee Beyondo.
Really fast, as you heard earlier, the power plant advised, the working group met, thank you, Xenia, Bruce I know is part of that group, will be meeting again tomorrow. The initial meeting was the kickoff, the mayor was kind enough to jump in, and Don Pollock Jr. and Senior, and Ms. Smukler was a part of it, I don't think there's anybody else just yet, but it was a good kickoff, and tomorrow we'll actually get down to perhaps some nitty-gritty, and report back here. Just also wanted to report that the Architectural Review Committee came up with a code about murals, but we're just going to hold off on that a little bit until Andy can start next week, and he can put his two cents into that, and then we'll bring it forward for discussion here before the board. I believe there is...
Andy Freeling?
Andy Freeling is the new planner and...
Head of the department.
Head of the building department. I can just say that I had heard his name in county government before, I'd never had the opportunity to meet him till now, and just speaking with him, I, I think we're very lucky to have him here in the village. Anything else? Planning Board, I believe, meets again next week, there was a ZBA meeting, there was only two issues up, a, a swimming pool and a...
Retaining wall.
Retaining wall, so nothing big there. And that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Juliano?
Thank you. Updates from the DPW, they're gearing up for, for the leaf program, and they have sent the leaf schedule to the clerk, I believe, so that should be, hopefully be posted on, online shortly, but I can read it to you. The east side of the village will be picked up, and this is, it's, it may change, the dates may change, you know, due to weather, but the east side of the village will be picked up between November 20th and December 1st, midtown would be picked up between December 4th and December 8th, and the west side of the village will be picked up between December 11th and December 15th. They ask that you don't put any leaves... They ask that you don't put any leaves on the street more than seven days prior to your schedule. They will not, if there's any leaves that are put in plastic bags, the, they will not be picking them up, so if you bag, bag the leaves, put them in, in paper bags. Once they're through the area, the, the DPW won't be returning again, and once again, they just wanna really emphasize that they will not pick up plastic bags because if it's, it's an environmental issue where they, where they're dumped and the plastic does not decompose. Also, DPW is completing road patches throughout the village, minor patches that the, that the, that the department does. They're completing the branch pickup, and once a branch pickup is done, they'll be going on, onto the leaves. They're making sure that trucks and the equipment is ready for the S-word for snow removal, just in case, and hopefully we won't get any, but they have to be prepared for it. And Steve, DPW, is working with the engineers on the next phase of drainage, the drainage over at Old Homestead and Oakwood, so he's working with the engineers on, on coming up with a Phase 2 of that. Parks update, their prep work is going out, again, for the Christmas lights and for the Dickens decorations. Softball season is continuing, so they're maintaining the fields for the remainder of the season. The village received a, a nice sign from the, from the bid, from the Business Improvement District. It's gonna be placed on the roof of the, of the bathroom over by the tennis courts over by Rocketship Park, and basically says Village of Port Jefferson bathrooms. A lot of people that are not familiar with the village don't know where the bathrooms are, so Dave showed me the, the sign the other day, it's a gorgeous sign, so they're gonna be putting that up, and it's going to really look good on the building. There was a question, Barbara, I think last month you had a question about the pole at Station Street, that's, I think all the wires are finally off of that, so they, that pole should be moving soon, according to, to what Davis told me. Also, there was a, a light, a spotlight on that pole that was shining towards the flag. Unfortunately, because of all the work that was being done, there's no electric to that pole, so we had gotten a complaint from somebody that the flag isn't lit uptown, but that will be rectified as soon, as soon as the pole is moved. Dave's aware of this, and he's gonna make sure that the light is repaired as soon as the pole is moved. Parks Department is constantly working on safety inspections. When I went over to, to meet with Dave one day, he brought me over to the, over to Rocketship Park, he's identified a couple, a few items that need repair, replacement of the Rocketship Park, some items that, that have, you know, through normal wear and tear or, or need to be replaced. So he's constantly looking at that, and he'll be, he'll be replacing those shortly. Rebecca mentioned frost the other day, and on Friday, when I met with Dave, it was early in the morning, we went over to Rocketship Park, and he showed me that Rocketship Park, sometimes they don't open it on time because of the frost. Sometimes when you're, when you're walking on it, it, that ground gets very slippery, the surface gets very slippery, so he'll keep it, keep the gates locked until the sun is able to come up and do its job and, and warm things up, and then he'll, he'll open the gates up. So if the, if the gates are, if the park is not open on time, that's, that's more than likely the reason.
Is that the rubbery?
The rubbery, yes.
That's slippery.
It's, gets very slippery when it's, yes, so he, so he keeps it, he keeps it locked until the, you know, until, until the frost is gone, so that it's safe to do. Parks Rec Committee, working with trustee Laux to develop a room rate, they're suggesting a non-resident room rate schedule, and that will be brought to the board once the, once the committee has, has brought that, has developed it. Last Saturday, I had my monthly sit-down, and, you know, I wanted to let everybody know that usually every, every first or second Saturday of the month, I'm over at the Village Center, just sit with everybody, anybody wants to come by and just discuss village, village items, concerns, whatever, I'm there from, usually from 9:00 to 10:30. I will not be there on, in December, between Dickens, the holidays and everything else going on, it gets a little too crowded there, so I'm not gonna be doing it in, in December. The next one will probably be January, either 6th or 13th, I'll announce the date as it gets closer. In the meantime, if anybody ever needs to speak with me, I mean, feel free to contact, you don't have to wait until, until those, those meetings are happening, just feel free to, to meet with me, and I'd be glad to, to sit down and, and speak with, and find out whatever your concerns are. As far as taxes and assessment, there's a mailing that went out concerning senior citizen real property tax exemption, and just to let you know, if you do have a, a combined income of $58,400 or less, you could be eligible for a senior citizen exemption for your, for the village property taxes. So if you, if you think you're eligible, come on in, speak to Kelly over at, in Village Hall, in the clerk's office. It's beginning November 1st, so the, they just started to take applications, and the applications must be in by December 31st. So if you think you're even eligible, if you have any questions about it, see Kelly at, at the tax department downstairs, and she'll be able to walk you through it and answer any questions that you may have for that. I was going to talk about Hobart Farm Park, but that's already been, been discussed, so I'm gonna leave that one alone for the time being. And finally, as you can see, I'm supporting, sporting and sprouting some new facial hair. I do this each November, it's called No Shave November, and it's to bring light men's health issues. This ye, this year, the issue is leaving closer to home as I've recently been diagnosed with prostate cancer. I'm lucky that we caught it early, and the prognosis for a full recovery looks very good. I'll be meeting with doctors soon to discuss the best approach and care for the treatment. It's only a bump in the road, and we hope that, hope and pray that this will be a quick and full recovery. If there is one thing I learned from my 94-year-old dad, it's to stay in tune with your body and to see a doctor when something does not seem right. I'm glad I did this, as early detection I hope will assist me on the road to recovery. So I urge everyone out there, see something, if you feel something, go talk to your doctor about it, and get your regular blood tests that, and, you know, regular physical exams, stay on top of your health, don't ignore things, especially regarding your health. And so I ask for your patience with me as I go through this process, I don't know what the treatments are going to be, but if I'm not always available, that's probably the reason why, and I just ask for your, your prayers and your good thoughts for a speedy recovery. And finally, concluding my report, I wanna remind everybody tomorrow's Election Day, so go vote. I wanna wish all the veterans out there Happy Veterans' Day and a thank you for your service, and if I don't get to see you before, Happy Thanksgiving. That's my report.
Thank you, Bob, and best wishes on a uneventful recovery.
Thank you, uneventful, we hope, yes.
Thanks for raising, thank you for raising that, too, so, I saw your post about other health issues, too, raising awareness about that, so, good on you.
Thanks.
Okay. Save the best for last over here, trustee Laux.
My wishes go with you, Bob, I've been through it, I know you'll come through it in flying colors. Much of what I wanna report has already been talked about tonight, I'll go through it quickly. The speed tables that we referred to earlier tonight have been installed, and they're going curb-to-curb. This problem probably was not evident to them, of the going over to, all curb-to-curb. It has had a very positive effect, though, in the mornings, I've been up there a couple of times, and it seems to have slowed down a lot of the traffic, and I see very few U-turns being made, as they were being made prior to this. We're still in the process of trying to obtain a crossing guard up there, it's a, it's kind of a long process. Suffolk County's going to come up and do a study, and after they do their study, they're gonna determine whether or not we need a crossing guard, which is something I don't understand, the safety of our children, a crossing guard is, to me, critical. The high school is also having problems with traffic, speeding in both directions. I was pleased to hear that Suffolk has been down there and written a few tickets. We had a situation here just this past week where a, the crossing guard up at the high school was crossing a staff member, and she was in the crosswalk when a white van came up the road, going about 45 miles an hour, and she had to pull the staff member and herself out of the way, so I hope we get more police presence up there. It's, it's really vital. I won't go too far into the youth group, you've heard enough about that, I think.
Is this the same youth group that has been participating with the...
Youth Council.
Youth Council that's been participating with the civic association? Is it the same group?
I don't think so.
There's a lot of youth groups around now.
I don't think so.
Is it? Okay.
What I do wanna mention in relation to the youth group is that the more, the better, if...
They're saying no. I just wanna say, it's an independent, I hear what you're saying, I think it would be great, actually, because Drew's been asking to come, but we have two, there's students...
No one can hear what you're saying on, on YouTube, so if you wanna come up to the, we're gonna break protocol a little bit and get this information out.
Is it all right if I just give clarity on it? I don't think this works anyway.
So I also didn't expect it, sorry about that.
Well, let's let trustee Laux finish his report, and then maybe we have an offline conversation about what, who's what, I think that's probably the best way to go. It's kinda confusing.
Yeah, just, just to continue with that, the, the youth council, at, at that meeting, we had sophomores, juniors, and seniors. I think we should be reaching out to the freshmen also. The more we can get people involved, the better. If people are listening out there and you wanna get on the youth council or join these students, you can contact Drew. I'm sure he'll welcome more people onto that council. Do you have a speaker now?
Yeah, I do. Okay, so the, the student liaisons are Drew and I think Noren, I don't know where, Xenia went, but, I'm sorry?
Tracy?
Yeah.
I'm okay with us, with us hearing about this report from the trustees who are liaising with the group.
No, but I'm saying trustee Biondo asked if I, he waved to me to answer because I was just explaining that these civics...
Different things.
Yeah, so the civics has two student liaisons...
Let's let trustee Laux finish his reports.
But they aren't reporting in the civics, that's all I'm saying.
Excuse me, point of order, Tracy.
I don't, do you wanna take this?
Point of order. We're just gonna let the trustee finish his report, and the public session for comment has concluded, but we're interested in learning more about which groups are what, but not, not right now.
Just wanna make sure people have the right answer. Okay, I'll talk to you after, I'll talk to you after, trustee Biondo, thank you.
Okay, still talking about schools. We have reached an agreement with the athletic department on use of the Scraggy Hill School, we're waiting for the board to approve it. We will be using that pool Tuesday evenings, we hope, from 5:30 till 8 o'clock. We will be developing some programs, both for adults and youngsters, at that pool throughout the winter months. Recreation, this past Tuesday, the recreation department held the annual Halloween party up at the country club. They did a fantastic job up there in supplying the food and beverages and DJ and games, and we had well over 200 people up there at the club. That's why no one came to my house for trick and treat, I think. Maybe they don't like my house, but...
Kinda hard to find.
Yeah, it is, it's very hard to find. The rinks has already got the skating rink set up, they did an amazing, quick turnaround from the parking lot to the rinks. They're scheduled to open on November 24th for skating. Resident night is scheduled for Friday, December 1st, up at the Village Center, hot chocolate, sweets, photos, photo op, visit with Santa, Festival of Trees, a DJ's gonna be there, free ice skating for the residents. That's, will run from 6 o'clock till 8:30 that evening. Festival of Trees is gonna be displayed for the entire month of December. We're going to be running a bus trip to New York City on December 7th, there's gonna be three stops on this trip, one of which would be the Rockefeller Center. If you're interested, you can contact the Village Center for tickets and more details. Bob mentioned this, Election Day is tomorrow, the Village Center will be closed, except for voting.
Voting in the Village Center?
Yeah, the Village Center is also gonna be closed on Friday. It was mentioned earlier that Village Hall will be closed, but the center will also be closed. Kayaks, we're gonna ask those people that have vessels in our kayak racks if they could remove them by November 18th. I mean, the weather's been nice, we've extended it way beyond our normal ending date. After that date, the Parks Department becomes very, very busy with the holidays, and they're pretty much responsible for cleaning those areas, so we ask that those people with vessels on those racks, try to get them off of there by the 18th of November, if we can do it. And that's pretty much all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. My report should be quick. So outreach to volunteers who have signed on through the Make a Difference site has begun, so we have more than 40 people who have signed up for various opportunities to get involved with the village. We have 20 different categories, and the most recent hand was raised virtually online through this website on Friday. So we're still getting people, we introduced this site about over a month ago, and we're still getting people who are using it to volunteer, so we're very excited about that. And as, as a board, as individual board members, I think the next step is to really look at either staff members or trustees who can kind of take the liaison position between some of these organizations and the, all of the organizations, and, and the people who have registered to volunteer. So, and sort of meet with them, trustee Laux has already started the process with the Parks and Reparation Advisory Council, I think there were nine or 10 people who, 11 who have volunteered to participate in that. Trustee Casseja, I saw recently, Bob, there, there's, are people who volunteered for the Tree Committee, Conservation Advisory Committee, and also the Zoning and Planning Board. We're, we're excited by all this activity from people whom we, we haven't really seen active before, people whose voices have sort of been just not, not coming forward, and they're coming forward again, so we're really excited by the, by these prospects. We'll have more to report on that, probably at the December meeting, we'll have some progress reports on that. As you saw earlier, with Bruce Miller mentioned, that the Power Plant Working Group has already had their first plenary meeting, and more people are talking about joining that group as well. So that is a very exciting prospect. Then, I also wanted to raise that I've been approached by several residents who know and loved Ken Brady, who was the village archivist, who began the village archive really in the Village Center, that it would be a wonderful thing to dedicate our Nameless Village Archive, located on the second floor of the Village Center, for, in his name. So we are going to talk about that, and it looks like it will probably end up being resolved on the November 20th meeting agenda, to dedicate that archive in Ken Brady's name. And there will be a, an event to officiate that, and that will be on the same night as the 60th Anniversary of Incorporation Celebration, that is December 12th at the Village Center. That event starts at 5:30, we have, we are inviting one and all who, who knew, loved, cared for, was friends with Ken Brady and respected him, and the work that he did to make that archive what it, what it is today, to attend that dedication ceremony, which will take place at 5 o'clock on December 12th. So come one, come all, and help us memorialize Mr. Ken Brady at the archive. Yeah, I think that covers my report, and now I think we need to go into our consent agenda, go through our resolutions. Court Frelo.
Thank you, Mayor. The November 6, 2023, meeting of the Village of Port Jefferson Board of Trustees is now proceeding. We have resolution numbers 3225 as a result of the fact that there are four additional resolutions resulting from the earlier executive session. Resolution number 03110623, resolution approving the minutes of the October 16, 2023, Village of Port Jefferson Board of Trustees meeting. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carries.
Resolution number 04110623, resolution authorizing the solicitation of a request for proposals to determine original cost and depreciation on the village's capital assets as set forth by the capital asset reporting requirements of GASB statement 34 and to provide current insurable values to be used for insurance reporting purposes. May I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Any discussion on this?
This is what you were talking about before, Stephen, right?
Yes.
And that RFP, is that a request for proposals on the website?
It will be.
It will be.
It will be. We just approved it now.
And this was what was lacking in the audit?
Correct.
It's the material weakness.
Several.
Yeah, for the last seven, I believe, six to seven years.
And how long will the RFP be open for?
We don't know yet, we have to create it.
We have to create it, so this is permission to be able to create it, to go out to do it.
Fantastic, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution number 05110623, resolution ratifying the rehiring of Callie Saiva as a part-time seasonal recreation aide, as recommended by Recreation Center manager Renee Lumberman, at an hourly wage rate of $18 per hour, effective October 28, 2023. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Resolution number 06110623, resolution hiring Connor Mendola as a part-time appearance ticket officer in the Village of Port Jefferson Code Enforcement Bureau, as recommended by Code Chief Andy Owen, at an hourly wage, excuse me, rate of 1831 per hour, effective November 8, 2023. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution number 07110623, resolution appointing the following three Parks and Recreation Advisory Council alternate members as full-time voting members of the Parks and Recreation Council, with terms to expire as detailed below. Number one, Mary O'Sullivan, with a term to expire in June of 2024. Number two, Dana Eng, with a term to expire in June of 2025. And three, Tom Proventure, with a term to expire in June of 2027. May I have a motion? Thank you. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution number 08110623, resolution reappointing the following three full-time voting members of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Council, all with terms to expire in June of 2026. Number one, Bob Gross. Number two, Reema Potter. And number three, Beth Capodano. May I have a motion?
Correction on the spelling, it's Bob Gross?
Yes.
I got, I got really excited thinking that Bob Ross was joining our Parks and Recreation Council.
Yes, pronounced properly, written improperly, so thank you.
He would definitely make some happy.
She pronounced it correctly.
Yes, thank you.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? I have a disappointed discussion of clarification on the June 2026 expiration date. So that's three years from today?
Yes.
But these board appointment, these appointments are five years in term, are they not? After the first term?
After the first term, correct.
So this is their, this is their term, they covered their first years of, their first years of appointment, I say that plural, they're all one-year appointments. They all agreed to be appointed to the next iteration of the board, correct? To be appointed again?
Correct.
That reappointment, is it, is it not in the code for five years?
We went over this.
We did?
Took this off your notes.
I thought it was a five-year, can we, can we check the code to see? It's a five-year appointment, right?
It is a five-year appointment.
I know we talked about it, but, and that's why I was a little confused by the 26th date.
Parks and Recreation Advisory Council.
This is probably premature because we're going to meet, possibly to rewrite this code.
Okay.
So this resolution is probably premature because I think we talked about making the terms kind of the same as the CCMA C, which is three years, instead of the five. Very difficult to get the people to commit to a five-year term.
Yep. So do you want, is there interest in tabling this or did we talk to these?
Clarification.
Why don't we table it just to?
Did we talk to the members to see what their, and they were interested in three years or five years?
No, not five years, definitely.
So I think.
Is there any sense in sort of re-upping them for one year so that they stay full-time voting members while the code gets worked on and then if we want to go back and have a resolution to amend?
They can be held over.
Right, right, at this point, they'd be held over.
I wouldn't recommend violating the code, they would just be holdovers.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So we'll table this and hold them over?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to table.
May we have a motion to table?
I'll make a motion to table resolution number eight.
Trustee Giuliano, thank you, may we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Biondo.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries.
Aye.
To table.
Thank you. Resolution number 09110623, resolution accepting with regret the resignation of Lisa Harris as an alternate member of the Village of Port Jefferson Planning Board, effective October 11, 2023. May I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution number 10110623, resolution approving the attached independent contractor agreement between the Village of Port Jefferson and Melissa Dunstetter for the fulfillment of duties and responsibilities related to the management of the Port Jefferson Farmers Market. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution number 11110623, resolution authorizing the attendance of Patrick Sullivan and Christopher Furcher at the Golf Course Superintendent's Association of America, GCSAA, conference and trade show in Phoenix, Arizona, from January 27, 2024 through February 1, 2024, at a registration fee of $1,295 for Patrick Sullivan and a registration fee of $775 for Christopher Furcher, and with all lodging, travel, and meal expenses to be reimbursed per the official Village of Port Jefferson travel policy, from line item number CR.7990.412, education travel expenses. The corresponding writ report as a synopsis of the training will be presented to the Board of Trustees in February of 2024. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution number 12110623, resolution approving the request of Raquel Fernandez, on behalf of Century, excuse me, Century 21 Icon, to waive the requisite $600 total in-sign application fees payable to the Village of Port Jefferson Zoning Board of Appeals for the attached correspondence. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you.
Any discussion on this?
I can clarify if, folks who haven't read the materials. Essentially, the Ms. Fernandez was given direction by the building department about a sign, she acted on their directions, and then was told that those directions were incorrect and she had to do a redo. So in fairness, I think this is the right thing to do.
They were charging her for the redo?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
And she's going through the process again, I believe.
Okay, so we're waiving the fee then, or as it were, yeah, we're waiving it. She didn't pay it yet, she just requested that it be waived and so we're voting on that, okay? So we had a motion, we had a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution number 13110623, resolution authorizing Treasurer Gaffka to perform the attached proposed budget amendment, journal entry number four, in the amount of $56,000 to increase projected revenues for line item number A, 1740, on-street parking meter fees, and to increase projected expenses for line item number A, 3320.402, managed parking CC fees, in order to more correctly state actual revenues and expenses for parking fees and credit card fees, and requesting that the proposed budget amendment, journal entry number four, be included as part of the formal meeting minutes of the November 6, 2023, regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. May I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
A second?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution number 14110623, resolution authorizing Treasurer Gaffka to perform the attached proposed budget amendment, journal entry number five, in the amount of $249,000, establishing the capital project budget for the renovation of the walkways at Harborfront Park, funded through inter-fund transfer and grant monies, and expensed through the newly created capital expense account known as Harborfront Walkway Project 2023. Line item number H8997605, and requesting that the proposed budget amendment, journal entry number five, be included as part of the formal meeting minutes of the November 6, 2023, regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you.
And just clarification, this is essentially just neatening up the project, so your grant monies coming in, out, and it's all just putting it sort of in the bucket of the Harborfront Walkways project?
Capital budget, yeah.
Yes, yes, it's using general fund monies to be transferred through the inter-fund transfer to capitals inter-fund transfer, and then grant monies to fund the expense side of the project.
Perfect, thank you.
He's basically doing what he promised to do and that would be to move the money from general into capital when paying for capital projects versus just paying capital projects out of the general fund that were allocated into the capital project.
Yes.
Correct? Did I get that right? Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
So what general fund account is it coming from or is it a number of?
Off the top of my head, it is A99500900, which is the inter-fund transfer.
Okay.
That's what she said.
That's off the top of your head.
Impressive.
Okay, can we, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All in motion carries.
Resolution number 15110623, resolution authorizing Treasurer Gaffka to perform the attached proposed budget amendment, journal entry number six, in the amount of $386,554.60, establishing the capital project budget for the recently completed 2023 paving project to be funded through the inter-fund transfer, as well as New York State DOT grants, CHIPS, Pave New York, EWR, and POP programs, and expensing the paving project costs through line item number H8997082, and requesting that the proposed budget amendment, journal entry number six, be included as part of the formal meeting minutes of the November 6, 2023, regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. Resolution number 16110623, resolution appointing Cindy Grauer, founder and managing partner of Coastline Wealth Management, as the principal for the treasurer's appointment to the Port Jefferson Business Improvement District Board of Directors, and further naming David Mamina and Sean Russell as alternates to Cindy Grauer as principal in the case of absence by Cindy Grauer. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are you have discussion?
Oh, sorry.
Do we, we have these resumes?
Yeah, they're online, actually. Yeah, they have a website.
Who?
Coastline Wealth Management.
They're at the building, right at the pen and pencil building. I think it's on the corner of Stony Hill Road.
Yes.
And Main Street.
Got it. And then the alternates?
This is, the alternates, yes, their bios are on that too, but this is really, I'm not sure if this really needs to be a resolution. We don't, I'm not even sure that we have the authority to vote on this because it's the treasurer's appointment. But that said, yes, their resumes and bios are on the website.
Resolution number 17110623, resolution.
Did we, did we vote on that?
I'm sorry.
Or do we not vote on that because we don't have to vote on it? It's the treasurer's appointment.
I thought you voted.
Yeah, I think we did too.
Okay, do, all in favor?
Aye. I think we already did, but yeah.
I think you already did too.
Yes, okay. Resolution number 17110623, resolution approving the attached proposed credit card policy, as recommended by Treasurer Gaffka, detailing the parameters for the use of Village of Port Jefferson credit cards by designated Village employees. May I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Second, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Just all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Quick question.
Okay.
You've made arrangements to have a credit card available for the superintendent at the golf course?
They are, they already exist, as far as my understanding, and basically this is just codifying, you know, the practice of having the credit cards and also maintaining safe practices for their storage and use and so on.
Yes, I'm in favor.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution number 18110623, resolution approving the attached proposal submitted by JRH Consulting Services DPC, in the amount of $38,000 for assistance with site inspections required for the proposed expansion at Mather Hospital, to be expensed from line item number T.0093 engineering fees. May I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a discussion?
Yeah, I have a question.
So is this, does Mather then reimburse the village?
They've, they've already paid us. They submitted a prepayment for these types of expenses and now that they paid us, we can now have the services.
Which is why it's in the T account.
Correct.
Correct, yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. Resolution number 19110623, resolution approving the attached proposal submitted by GEI Consultants, Inc., PC, in the amount of $5,000, to prepare responses to the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, request for information, RFI, related to prior regulatory agency coordination for the environmental planning and historic preservation program in support of the East Beach Bluff Stabilization Project. May I have a motion? Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion on this?
So is, this is getting the village closer to being able to accept?
This is getting the village closer to being awarded.
Awarded.
Yes, so the village hasn't been awarded for the Upland Project grant yet. This will help us get to that.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Is this the Schumer money?
It is.
Got it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Resolution number 20110623, resolution approving the event application submitted by Barbara Ransom, on behalf of the Greater Port Jefferson Chamber of Commerce, for the use of Village of Port Jefferson personnel, for traffic control related to the requested closure of both lanes of Main Street and East Broadway for one half hour, and for the use of Village personnel for two hours, to ensure pedestrian safety for the annual Santa Parade, beginning at 3:00 PM on November 26, 2023. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Resolution number 21110623, resolution terminating the engagement of Gerard Glass for the provision of Labor Council Services for Labor and Employment Related Matters to the Village of Port Jefferson, effective November 13, 2023. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution number 22110623, resolution approving the engagement of Bon, Shonik, and King for the provision of Labor Council Services for Labor and Employment Related Matters to the Village of Port Jefferson, effective November 13th, 2023. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution number 23110623, resolution approving the hiring of Deirdre Ryan as a full-time senior planner for the Village of Port Jefferson at an annual salary of $78,000 per year, effective November 27th, 2023,